Good evening. I want to welcome all you guys to the City of Milton. We're glad you're here tonight. Welcome to the October 8, 2012 work session. Work sessions are more informal, steady to update the council on business items. No votes will be taken. Tonight, we have seven items on our agenda. Do we have any public comment?
No public comment.
I'm going to assume we don't, since we don't have any public other than Bob, if you want to call in public. Okay, so then we'll move on. I know Lance was not able to make it here, but everyone else is. So I'll ask the clerk. Who's our clerk tonight? Our clerk just signed on the first item.
The first item is discussion of open meetings, open records compliance regarding House Bill 397. Enter our.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, it's a pleasure to be able to do this for you. This is, you may see some PowerPoint slides in your packet. This is actually a presentation that I have made a lot. And so I'm very comfortable doing this, and I sort of want to answer any questions that you have. This pertains to the rewrite of the Open Meetings and Open Records Act. You know that April of this year was the first major modification of the act, quite frankly, since the last decade. And it's caused a lot of questions to be generated, and a lot of elected and appointed officials want to know all the moving parts and how it works. And I get the honor of being able to educate those folks about that from time to time. So I am prepared to go over as much or as little of this as you want. I certainly don't want to bore anybody. I know that the public is very excited about this. They've all come out en masse to hear about this new legislation. But I'll go ahead and just start, and just tell me when you want me to stop. Or if you want to ask a question, just ask a question. But it's a very interesting modification. First of all, this was a labor of love, really started in 2011. All of the stakeholders, media folks, local government officials, local government lawyers, activists, citizens in the activist community, all were part of this. Quite frankly, it was spearheaded by the Attorney General, as well as Representative Jay Powell down at the State House, to sort of try to get all of these various stakeholders together in the same room and see if they could come together on some terms of how to make the rewrite make sense. Obviously, we wanted to, first of all, make sure we did no harm. That was one of the keys, is whenever you open up a statute like this, you want to make sure you don't do, make it worse than it was before you began to touch it. So let's just go through it. First of all, on the big themes, on slide three, on the big themes like who must be granted access, the Open Meetings Act, of course, has not changed. Still, of course, the public is entitled to be at all of the, sort of unquote, meetings, as is the press. And of course, there is a requirement that there be the ability to audio and video record the meetings. So in addition to the fact that you all already provide video of your meetings by way of your grant assistance, there are jurisdictions throughout the state that have individuals that will come with a video camera, and they will pitch a tripod and literally video the meetings as well. And so we have that in some of the jurisdictions I work in. We have that same thing, and they're, of course, immediately posted on YouTube for everyone to watch the meeting. So that is something that is required under law. Now, we have the right to adopt reasonable regulations on how your meeting is going to be run. And if you have a large presence like that of folks that want to come and video, you can put them in a particular area so they don't disrupt the meeting, obviously.
I have a question. Wasn't there a situation in Forsyth where incoming about someone that was bringing videos?
You know, the remarkable, first of all, council member, that's exactly right. In fact, the irony of it is, is the occurrence was on the day the new law was signed by the governor. That very day, there was a situation in the City Hall where an activist, activist, a community citizen, came in to video a city council meeting and was asked to leave, and in fact was removed from the gallery. So needless to say, that resulted in not only an Attorney General investigation, but ultimately started the first Attorney General lawsuit under the act against the City of Coming. And so we're waiting to see right now what the results of that litigation are going to be. That was just an unfortunate situation for a host of reasons. So it's going to make some law. Should have some case law on that fairly quickly. But I do believe there was an entitlement to video. I do believe. So what are the big changes? That's really what I want to talk to you about. What are the bigger changes that have gone on in the act since the new rewrite? First of all, the definition of what, in fact, what is covered by the act is new. It used to be under the old act that obviously you are covered by the act, you acting collectively, you as the council, your designer view board, your planning commission, your board of zoning appeals. Those are the easy ones, right? We all know they're covered by the act. The old act used to provide, though, that committees you created, of which you were on those committees, they were covered by the act. Now, remember what I said? Committee created by you or another board covered by the act, of which one of you served on that committee. In that situation, you were covered by the act. It's not the rule anymore. The rule is, is anything you create, whether you serve on it or not, is covered by the act. So even if it's a committee comprised solely of staff, or a committee comprised solely of citizens with no council involvement, no ZBA involvement, no planning commission involvement, it doesn't matter. It's covered by the act. That's new. And what I'm seeing, quite frankly, throughout the state, is the practical result of that is, is there going to be fewer committees created. Because obviously, once you begin to open up all of these processes and procedures with respect to every committee, it's just a lot of work. I mean, a lot of these committees can get, can run afoul of the act very quickly. They're not fully able to publish a notice. They don't get their agenda up in time. They just don't do some of the things. And of course, what I am seeing is, is that folks are just disbanding committees and saying, it's just too much work. Now, that's not going to, there's a lot of situations where you got to have a committee. You're just going to have to. But I'm seeing jurisdictions really beginning to look at all the committees they've created and saying, do we really need that? Do we even need that committee? That's just one of the bigger changes, though. And that was on, that was purposeful. That was on purpose, to capture every sort of committee created by a governing body.
I have a question on that, too.
Please.
A couple of us are on the Friends of the Milton Library, for example.
Okay.
Is that?
Who created that committee, Friends of the Milton Library?
Well, we were, how did that work?
I don't know. I missed the meeting.
It wasn't the city.
It wasn't the city. But we were just council members, just being a...
And that's a great question. So if the city of Milton did not create the Friends of the Library, then your presence on there should not constitute or give rise to an open meetings, that concern of any kind, unless Friends of the Library was created by some other agency of maybe Fulton County. And that would be something you'd want to look at. It's very likely that might just be like a 501(c)(3) preparation that you're just on. And of course, then, the only reason you'd want to look at it is if it involves a quorum of you going there every night. Doesn't look like it did if it's three of you, so you're fine.
Right.
Yes, sir. That was it? Okay. So that's, those are great questions, and those are the sorts of questions that, if anything, I like my clients to ask. Those are just good thoughtful questions of which you're thinking of. Under the new Open Meetings Act, and again, I'm going to, I'll go ahead and tell you, I'm going to spend more time on the Open Meetings Act than I am on the Open Records Act, because, quite frankly, you probably don't deal much with the Open Records Act. That's more of an issue for me and perhaps staff to deal with as they get the request. Open meetings may implicate you more than them, or more than anything else. Really, the Open Meetings Act defines the sorts of assemblies or gatherings into three big groups. There are assemblies or gatherings that are clearly covered by the act. That's one. There are assemblies or gatherings that are covered by the act, but the assemblies themselves don't meet the actual technical definition of a meeting. We're going to get into that. I'll touch on it very briefly. And then finally, there are actually some assemblies that you may be a part of that are not covered by the act at all. And when I say that, I mean literally, they're not covered by the act, and they are a situation where you can gather as a quorum of the council, and they're simply not covered by the act. Let me give an example. This was new. This was added to the law, and I don't even think that any, a lot of folks really appreciate the power of this provision, but a mediation involving a neutral party, all right? So let's say the city of Milton is involved in litigation with another party, let's say another government, or let's say another private actor. And in the course of litigation, we decide to mediate, right? That happens. We go to mediate. We would hire a neutral party, right, to go act as our mediator, whether it be any mediator, or, that's just an example, any mediator. You may say, well, the full council wants to come and participate in that mediation with that neutral and the other party. Is that a meeting? We have to, is that a closed session? Is it executive session? What is it? The new act, it's not covered by the act at all. That means for you all to go and assemble and to sit down with that third-party mediator and to have those caucuses, remember how the caucuses come and go, and you enter into an out-of-caucus and you try to establish your position. It's not covered by the act at all, so there's no notice, there's no agenda, there's no nothing. You can just go and you can participate. Now, the only caveat to that is, is if you come up with a resolution in mediation, you settle the case, you agree to pay some amount of money or what have you in mediation, it's not binding until you bring it out into an open session of the city council and articulate the terms and then approve it in open session. That's the only caveat. But again, that's a fairly significant exemption to the act, is the ability to, and of course, right now, this is getting a lot of play in lost, lost mediations. A lot of folks are doing this in lost. In fact, I'm doing one in Forsyth County on Monday, Monday, next Monday, and it's not going to be covered by the Open Meetings Act.
Would you recommend just play it on the side of caution, to notify the city clerk or the city manager that we are all participating or at least having a quorum in one of these quasi-committee meetings?
Oh, on a committee meeting?
Or something that's not really related to the city.
Yeah, I do. And of course, there have been instances where I've dealt with your clerk or even your city manager, and there may be instances where you're going to go do something, and it may involve even an impromptu assembly of a quorum. And we've gone and sort of ran a notice, just to be cautious. And so we're still doing that. We wouldn't change that. You know, we always get the question about, well, what if I attend a, how about a volunteer appreciation banquet? And there's going to be a quorum of us there? What is the appropriate thing to do? Well, the act speaks to that. It specifically says that assemblies of a social or civic or religious or ceremonial nature are not considered meetings under the act. Remember, I told you there was one form of assembly that didn't meet the definition of a meeting? That sort of civic, social, religious sort of event does not meet the definition of a meeting. And so you technically, if it doesn't meet the definition of a meeting, you don't provide a notice for that. A lot of jurisdictions still do, out of an abundance of caution, just to be on the safe side. You know, the city council may very well appear in a quorum at this volunteer reception banquet, but it's not a meeting. Now, there is a caveat to those exceptions to the meeting definition, and that states that if it can be established that the primary purpose of attending that sort of an event was to overcome having a real meeting, you can still get in troubles. And it's the same rule that, quite frankly, we have all talked about before. If the law gives you this sort of an accommodation, this allowance, but we abuse it, then it can still, can still run afoul of the act. For instance, let me give an example. You go to that sort of an event, a volunteer banquet, or volunteer banquet, appreciation banquet and all, there's four of you there, so it's a quorum, it's not a meeting under the act. But you all decide to go huddle together in a corner and begin to talk about the very controversial zoning that's coming up in front of the council. Well, that's a violation of the act. The fact that you were there, you had every right to be there, and that's not a violation. But when you abuse it, and again, not by council, but you understand hypothetically, if it's abused, it can still be a violation of the law. So the Open Meetings Act has done, the new version has done, a pretty good job of trying to show all those various sorts of situations you find yourself in, that you need to be able to participate in, and it not be a meeting. For instance, another instance where a lot of the council may find themselves present in a quorum is going to be training. Every year, you all may go to Savannah, or Jekyll Island, or Atlanta, or Athens, or these situations where you have to go and attend multi-jurisdictional training, either by GMA or what have you. Can you go and participate in those sorts of training forums, even if there's a quorum present? The answer is yes. There's a specific exemption under the Open Meetings Act. And in fact, the law even now allows you to drive there together in a quorum without that being a meeting. Now, if you all get in the car together, though, and decide to drive to Savannah for five hours and discuss city business in the car, that would be prohibited. So again, you would have to be very creative to figure out how to fill five hours of time talking about sports and other things and not sitting...
Is this during football season?
Yeah, that's right. That was almost contemplated in the act, so. You also can go and meet with representatives of your local delegation, state delegation, even your federal delegation, at their offices, wherever their offices may be, your state or federal offices, and that would not be considered a meeting as well. And that could be a full quorum of you. Again, so if you get an invitation from the state delegation that represents Milton, and you go down to their offices in Atlanta and meet with them as a quorum, you may do that, and that's not considered a meeting under the act. So again, a lot of accommodation to government officials to go and do these sorts of things. The only caveat being if you take those opportunities to do things other than what the statute specifically provided for, it can still run afoul of the act. Yes, sir.
Much likely, if you're invited by your delegation to come down and talk, you're going to talk about business that pertains to the city.
Absolutely. That's still, it's absolutely contemplated.
Okay.
Yes, sir. I mean, of course, that's right. Absolutely. You'd be going down to talk about the city of Milton business, and I think you have every right to go do that. I think, though, that in that environment, driving back, what have you, just be mindful that we wouldn't want to get talking about things other than what you went down there and discussed with them. All right. Just a couple of interesting things under what is not a meeting. The statute now provides that incidental conversations unrelated to the business of the agency is not a meeting. Now, we've always thought this, but to the extent we want to talk about sports, and you want to talk about maybe even presidential politics. That used to be unclear, whether you could talk about presidential politics. Well, it's assumed you can now talk about presidential politics. That would not be considered a meeting, even if it's a quorum, and even if it's just you're gathered around the water cooler, because they don't pertain to the city of Milton government. There was also quite a bit of discussion when this act was being formulated down at the State House about whether emails should constitute a meeting. And you probably remember, I had some reservations about that, too, and I have tried to be very careful about that, the whole notion of a cyber discussion. The notion that we sit down and you can copy each other with an email, and we can basically, you can engage in sort of a cyber chat. Now, it's not simultaneous. It's not like we're talking right here, you don't respond back to me in real time, and of course, a cyber discussion can take days, or hours, or weeks to have, but there was a concern that could constitute a meeting. Well, now, there's a specific exception that says that email communications among members of an agency are not a meeting. Not only does it not meet the definition, it's not covered by the act at all. However, those emails, subject to attorney-client privilege exception, those emails would be subject to the open records. And so that's the accommodation. But that was, that didn't have to go that way. There was quite a bit of effort from some other parties to say that those sorts of discussions should constitute a meeting, but that's not the way the law ended up being drafted. It was finally drafted. That is not under the act at all. Participation in meetings, this is a situation, an issue of which I am particularly aware. The issue is, is can a member of the council call in and participate in a meeting basically remotely? Okay? So the answer is yes, but there has to be a quorum of you physically present, all right? So let's just get an example. Let's say Councilmember Longoria will be out of town, and wants to participate in a meeting of the city council, all right? The answer is, can he, if there's going to be a quorum of you physically present, call in, literally on a speakerphone, and participate? And that even means vote. The answer is yes. Two things have to be in place. Number one is that he would have to be out of the jurisdiction. So you have to be out of the city of Milton. I've had this happen once since the new act came into play, and the board, the board member called in and on the speakerphone in front of the full gallery, and said, you know, where are you for purposes of the record? And this individual was in Kansas. Well, that was out of the jurisdiction, so that meant the requirement. Now, you can do it two times a year if you're out of the jurisdiction, or the other exception is if you have a health concern, and you're sick, you're sick. And you can do that twice a year. The only exception to the twice-a-year rule is if literally you have a doctor's note, such that you are simply, maybe you have a serious illness and simply just can't make it in. But the overriding public policy of the act is, if you run for this sort of office and you get elected, you need to be, you need to be present if you can.
Now, our current ordinance does not allow for that, I do not believe. So are we planning on changing it so that you, because I think ours basically says you have to be physically present?
That's a great question. It's a great question. In fact, Councilmember Thurman is correct. The rules by which you all operate on have actually, Sudi and I sat down and have just revised them to come into full compliance with the new law. So you have not adopted these yet, but we are bringing these to you to try and adopt them. Because there were some changes, they weren't huge changes, but there were some things that these needed to be tweaked to match the new law, so Councilmember Thurman is spot-on correct, and so these have been brought to you to change those. So that's the, that's the new law about basically participation by way of phoning in, and it's sort of a nice accommodation. Now, there is actually some additional language about can you hold a telephonic full meeting? In other words, could you have a telephone-based meeting where none of you are present at all? The answer is yes, that you could do that, but the requirements are so exacting that I'm not sure how it practically works, because the rule is, is that while you could have such a fully telephonic meeting, the public must be able to participate and hear simultaneously at the same time that you would otherwise be transacting business. So from a technological standpoint, I'm not sure how you would do that, whether it would be a streaming, a streaming thing on the web, or you have a massive bank of speakers here so that the gallery could assemble, but they would have...
We have all little iPads with our pictures on it here.
If you have a conference call, you just make some of the lines listen only, and the council member lines are, you know, bidirectional, so you can, you can speak. So that's easily done.
I guess. It just seemed to me a lot of work, you know, guys just all come in, but perhaps there could be like weather events, maybe? That's what they were thinking? There could be some situations where that sort of physical attendance just isn't possible. But it is allowed under the act now, but it would take a little bit of technological maneuvering. Yes, sir.
Well, this would allow then less of a physical quorum present than would it not if you wanted to use that same interpretation?
Well, yeah, that would seem to. Now, again, that sort of situation, though, is only going to be allowed if there is some sort of a public safety or preservation of property requirement, so I didn't make that clear. I'm talking about, I'm talking about purely calling in with no one physically present. So there is going to be, need to be some sort of an exigency about the reason to do that.
Oh, so you can't just schedule your regular council meeting as a conference call?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct. And that was, I was uncertain. But otherwise, though, with respect to the, to the calling in, if you're out of jurisdiction, now that's, that's just what it is. If you're out of jurisdiction or if you're ill, you can do that twice a year. But again, a quorum is physically present. Okay, let's talk very quickly about executive session. Under the old rules, the reasons to go into executive session remain pretty much the same. It's the old standbys, potential pending litigation, land acquisition, and personnel. Although, under land acquisition, there are some more nuances to it. For instance, now you can go into executive session to not only talk about buying land, but selling land. That has been a big thorn a lot of people sied for a long time. Why does the same public policy rationale not allow us to go and talk about selling land? Because obviously, we would want to keep those discussions private as well, at least until the land is sold. We can also go into executive session to talk about options on land and even leasing of land. So there are some additional nuances to the land acquisition component. We can go into executive session to talk about personnel. We can go into executive session to interview what's called the agency head. So if you were interviewing, for instance, the city manager, could you go into executive session? You could. I will tell you, a lot of attorneys who do this felt they could do that before the law expressly called it out that you could do it, because I know I have participated in that before. Now, the law expressly says you can interview your executive head in a closed session. But let's talk about voting in executive session. The old rule, and this is a subject of a lot of misinformation, the old rule before the new amendment changed was you could vote in executive session. You could vote in executive session on land acquisition, you could vote in executive session on litigation. A vote in executive session on personnel matters was not binding. The new law does capture that, but expressly sort of stipulates what you can vote on. You can vote in executive session on authority to acquire property, you can vote in executive session to order a survey, you can vote in executive session to authorize a settlement of a lawsuit. I believe you can vote, it's not specifically called out, but I believe you can vote in executive session to initiate litigation in executive session. But I want to focus on a couple of things, particularly with respect to acquisitions, contracts, and settlement of lawsuits. Those two things specifically, if you vote on them in executive session, that's fine. They can be the basis upon which, for instance, your city attorney or your city manager would take action, go and try to get the contract signed. But those settlements, the acquisition of the land, will not be binding and final until, until it's put on an open session out here and voted on, and the terms are articulated to the public before the vote. And we've done that. We've been doing that. And in fact, you've probably seen on some of your agendas, things you may have discussed in executive session, you may have seen them out here on your agenda with the terms called out, and then you voted on them. So it's a little more exacting, but it's quite accommodating as well, and it sort of clears up all of this uncertainty, because before the new law, this was all case law-driven. And so people were looking to cases to figure out what they could do. Now it's nice. Now it's very clear. Now we know. Now, with respect to minutes in executive session, your city clerk, it's a great job. I've worked with her. She didn't need much working with. She's, she's got a real good handle on this. But minutes in executive session used to not be required before the law changed, except on the topic of land acquisition. Land acquisition minutes used to have to be taken in executive session. Of course, those minutes under the old law then became open records as soon as the land acquisition was closed upon, we finished the transaction, or if we abandoned the transaction, then those minutes became open. You didn't take, you didn't take minutes in executive session on personnel or litigation. You just didn't take them. Now, you must take minutes in executive session on everything. Litigation, land acquisition, personnel, everything. Don't worry about what's in them. I've already, Sudi and I have a real good dialogue on what's in them, and I know I'm very comfortable with what's in your minutes. The minutes now on everything are meant to provide a court, if there is a challenge to what goes on in executive session, there, there, there's supposed to be documents to show the court what we were doing in executive session. The original, one of the things that had actually been discussed when the law was percolating downtown was to require video of all executive sessions. And then those videos would be kept confidential in case there was a challenge, and then the judge could review what we talked about in executive session. Well, that didn't make it in the law. Now, it's just, you take minutes. The minutes are not public records, ever. So the minutes never come out, land acquisition, personnel, litigation, the minutes never come out, except if there's a challenge, and then they get handed to the court. It's called in-camera, which simply means in the judge's chambers, and the judge looks at them to decide if we had an appropriate executive session topic. So that's the, that's the rule on minutes. There is a requirement that the officer presiding over the executive session, Mr. Mayor, that this would be, this would be you. If there is a discussion in executive session that is deemed by the presiding officer to be outside of the scope of the executive session, the presiding officer has an obligation to call those discussions out of order and direct that they discontinue. And if there is no such discontinuation of that discussion, the executive session is to be immediately adjourned. Okay? So that's, that's just a new rule. Quite frankly, in practice, that is what's been happening in some situations anyway. I've never seen that happen here, and I've never felt uncomfortable as far as a discussion in executive session here. But that's a fairly practical statutory embodiment of, I think, what most people That's pretty much my overview of the Open Meetings Act. And unless you all really want me to, I don't know that I need to go through the open records. I think, really, this is more for an open meetings discussion. If you have any questions of me, you know where to find me, and I'll be happy to answer them. But thank you for letting me talk to you about this today. Great topic, and you're in really good hands. You've got a great staff that are way on top of these issues, and we've been working closely. Councilman Thorne, we will get our internal rules to match the new law. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else have any other questions? Thank you for putting this together.
My pleasure.
It's good to have this paper copy too to review. As we move forward, if there's no more questions, we'll move on to the next item. City clerk.
Next one.
Assistant Director.
City manager. Next item for discussion is a discussion on Milton branding and signage project. Mr. Jason Height.
Yep, it's on, okay, good. So last time, when we met, you guys had some comments, some suggestions, so tried to work those in and bring you something back that I hope you'll like. So this is what we left with last time. What I heard was that the three horses with the different colors was the one that everyone liked most to show that we have kind of, you know, different areas in Milton, different kinds of people. With the tagger on there and we liked some color. The font was okay, the tagger was okay. I was asked to maybe try a different horse with a kind of a different running style, also to try and incorporate some of the four board equestrian fencing that we have used to architecturally say you are in Milton. Make sure that the established 2006 is definitely in there. And just as a refresher, you know, what the logo should be doing, should be instantly recognizable, but it should give a sense of that history, small town feel, movement, trust, expertise, and our professionalism as a government. So first I tried working the fence in. So here we have two examples of fencing, one in front and one behind. As I worked on this, I started thinking though that there's a little bit of a problem because it's two dominant visual elements. The fence really creates a strange, I think it does two things. It's, it's kind of confusing to the eye a little bit. And I think also, when you put a fence up as a symbol, it has connotations that it brings with it. Either you're inside the fence or you're outside the fence. So either you're blocked in and you can't get out, or you've escaped from something that you wanted to escape from. So I also tried just making it white to give the visual idea that they are running behind a fence, but I also thought that was a little too close to Fulton County's, their, their tree that gets cut up. And I didn't know that it necessarily came across as a fence. So then I was like, okay, well, let me see what I can do. So I worked up two new horses. I had one where it's rearing up, I like that idea of, you know, going up, moving. And then I had one that was a three-quarter that was just a different idea of, of the horse and it seems to really give a sense of movement and like it's coming toward you. So I replaced the three horses here with that new horse style, made sure the established 2006 was in there, and, and I didn't go with the fence. But I, I want to say that most people are gonna see this as they're driving down the road, right? I mean, they'll see it on our stationery, they'll see it on, you know, on our publications and stuff. But mostly what we're counting on is that they will see it as they enter the city of Milton and we have those, those road signs and those are built to go on four board fencing. What we're looking at for the installation is like a piece of four board fencing that this would then go on. So I think it works together and I think that's where most people will see it. And I also sat through a discussion with, that ICMA held with, with North Star, the, the branding company, one of the branding companies we discussed last time. And one of the, one of the points they were really trying to get across was to have an open brand, but that you can share with your community, but really a malleable brand. And what they were showing was that in, this one community in particular in Indiana, that what they did was they had the basic idea, the basic logo, and then they let it go and be part of their community in other areas. And the basic idea was, don't lock yourself in with the only image that you've got into your logo, you know? Let it, let it be able to suggest an idea and then you work with that idea because it gives you more space to work with. So once again, you know, if we've got the, you know, you see a horse, well, horses aren't just outrunning all over sales. They, you know, you have the idea their horse goes in a fence, so then when people see the horse fence, they go, oh, okay, I'm here. And then I had another idea, just because I like to make things difficult to myself. The three-quarter horse did not look very good, the three of them. So I had an idea just to break out something like this. I thought I'd throw it out there just to see what you guys thought. And I also like this idea of not qualifying the, that it came from the on numbers survey, just that it's home of the best quality of life in Georgia. That's our tagger, you know, that's our tagline. And if anybody ever goes, well, who told you that? Well, we haven't, you know, we can back it up. But so that's what I brought to you. I mean, basically where, where we're at at this point is, if you like the other logo, it's here with a new horse. Hold on, just a minute. It's a slightly different horse, the three colors, the established 2006 is in there. And I would just, I, you know, the same tagger is on there. So I just wanted to know what you guys thought about it at this point and then, you know, I can, I can move forward with it. And I wanted you to know as well that this is not just going to be a logo and a tagline. I plan on, when we find the economic development coordinator, coming up with an entire brand strategy. You know, so this is our, we know what our brand is. We have a lifestyle brand. Councilmember Thorne and I were talking about this. That was one of the other interesting examples that was in the, the discussion with North Star Branding, is there was a, a community in Florida and their, that, their brand was lifestyle. So a lot of their business opportunity branding was lifestyle branding. So it was like people having fun, people riding horses, people doing things that weren't, you know, people in business suits saying, oh, I can do business here. It was other ideas. The other idea was, it's a great place to do business and live here. You know, it's a fun place, wouldn't you want to do your business here? And so I think we can play well into that idea. And I just wanted to kind of assuage your, you know, your concerns if, if you were a little bit worried that it was just a logo and just a new tagline and we just keep, no. I, I plan on really expanding this with economic development person and, you know, we really move forward. And I want to give us something that can help the city expand and grow and, but stay core to what we expect the city's image to be.
Is that it? Comments, questions?
Yeah, Jason, I really like everything that you did. I think dropping the business journals on numbers part, it makes a lot of sense because you're right, you know, the next thing we'd have to do is put the date of the, you know, publication in there and stuff like that, which I think is a little bit overboard. I like the, the balance, the symmetry of the three horse. Because something just seems out of whack with the, that one.
Okay.
Although if you shrank the horse.
Yeah.
Down at the same scale as Milton and put that in, in the bars, that, that might make it look more balanced, but I don't want to tell you, you know, design yet another logo.
No, 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 it's okay. And, you know, the first, in the first presentation, there were a couple that had that as well that, I had some that were popping out, some that were in there. So, I mean, I have examples of it and it's just, you know, it's just, it's a process to go through and figure out what we like and what we want.
No, but it's good work.
I'd say on that, the one with the one horse, that's probably my favorite, but what sticks out to me is the Georgia. Maybe if Georgia was smaller, didn't have the dots in it, it's like, I almost like to see Milton bigger that pops out rather than too much Georgia, if that makes any sense.
I understand, I mean, we could, you could.
Could you outline Milton with the darker colors to show that it would kind of pop out at you? Because I actually like the one horse too, I kind of like the.
I mean, I like Joe's idea, maybe if you made the horse smaller and pulled the Milton up bigger and had Georgia smaller.
Yeah.
You know, maybe so that Milton itself takes up a lot more of the space than Georgia. But again, it's, everybody's got, you know, I think it looks good overall, that's just my opinion there.
Bill?
I'd go along with the single horse too. I think the three horses is kind of busy.
Okay.
Although it's a nice design, I like it. But I think, I agree with making the single horse a little bit smaller and the Milton larger.
Okay, go with bigger Milton, smaller horse. I can, I can, I can work on shrinking the Georgia too.
I mean, even if you took the spaces out in between, maybe it would be smaller and the Milton would stand out more, but.
Okay.
On the triple horse is the Milton font is larger. Maybe we go with that size.
Well, and to, and to be fair, this, if I'm not mistaken, I can work on it, but it, it's just the way that the font met, you know, the whole thing fit in the space that, that it gives me. When you look at it, I think that those are the same font sizes and everything. Now I could also make the, I, I chose to go with the lighter brown here to contrast with the black, because generally with a black you want a lighter, almost caramel color. But it would, you know, it, that, that darker brown can stand up to it. So I could, I could work on different colors as well to try and figure out which one.
Or even if you switch the colors and had the Milton be the darker and the Georgia be the caramel, the horse be the caramel, it might.
Okay.
So that the black would stand out.
The stripes in?
Yeah, I like the, I actually like the three horses in my mind, but I like where you're going with the single horse as well. You know, it's, it's a really a design layout issue, I think, with the single.
Okay.
I kind of like the three different colored horses though, just because it represents diversity within the community. You know, we're, we're more than just one thing. But that's just, that's just me, I could see where we can do the other one too. The problem is that you got a design layout issue with the, with the single horse.
What you could do is put an Appaloosa.
I'm all, I love Appaloosas on the law, I love doing that.
I like an appaloosa.
So when you say design, you mean shrink down the three-quarter?
Well, I could see taking the Georgia, basically shoving it over and put, drop the horse down so you have a single, you have the horse on the right, up Milton, Georgia, and I could see that.
Okay.
You know, if you just take that bar that it's standing on and kind of move it underneath the end. You know, I, but that's.
Oh, I see what you mean. So, so move the, move the bar down.
Yeah.
And have the Georgia have the established where it is and then just move the horse down.
Well, move, shrink Georgia in under Milton and maybe bring the horse down a little bit or stretch it out or something like that. You know, I, I could see that. But that, again, that's, it depends on how you were able to design, on, you know, if you use Cork Express or Adobe Photoshop or something like that.
Oh, you could establish 2006 below the line next to Georgia and so that Georgia's a smaller.
Yeah, I understand, I understand. Yeah, let me, let me work on that because that was one of the reasons too, like I explained last time why I used that Trajan with the, with the aerial fence is because it, it juxtaposes nicely, so it should be able to stand next to each other and look at that.
Sure.
Anything else?
Okay, well then I guess I'll just see you next month with that version. We'll go from there.
We'll send helpers and it'll, it'll keep going.
You know what's funny is that was like, one of the big things is they were like, get a lot of, get a lot of feedback in the community, like I said, you know, that I, I felt that we did with the strategic plans so that we know where, what we need to have. But then they said, keep the design group. Small.
We'll keep going till we'll end up back to where your first design was.
Beforehand, beforehand, you had a lot of input from the staff as well, did you have a lot of input from the staff?
Not on these, no. I, I simply worked in what you guys had, wanted to see and, and so, I mean, I certainly can do that when we have our next staff meeting and stuff, since we'll have, you know, it'll be in November, so I can work it in and see whatever, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll, before we move on to agenda item number three, I just want to, I noticed we've got a couple more folks that have shown up since we began the meeting and just opened it up to make sure if there was any public comment, if anyone wanted to fill out a public comment card. Okay, let's move on to item number three then.
Item number three is RZ 12-14 to amend Article 9 Administrative Permits and Use Permits, Division 3 Administrative Permits, Subdivision 2 Minimum Standards, Section 64-1609 Swimming Pool Private. Kathy Field.
Good evening, Mayor. Councilman. Not who you expected, huh? Little background on where we're, the building department would like to go with these pool barriers. When I got here, this was a little out of the ordinary to have this sized fence and this type of fence that's going around pool barriers. And we've had some issues come up from ladder effect to, we're using perimeter fences around three, four, five acre properties for pool barriers, which opens up a lot of liability, not only for the owners, but for the contractors as well. Difficult to get gates in correctly, causes every door in the dwelling to have to be alarmed. We all know, once we're gone in just a couple of months, you're gonna get real tired of those alarms every time the front door opens or a side door or a garage door. And any, any door to that dwelling has to be alarmed. So we know those are getting disarmed, which allows another chance for a young child to succumb to another pool death. So that's where this was coming from, that's the direction we'd like to go, to get it more in line with exactly what the code says that has been established nationwide to go back with a four board fence. But to have some stipulations exactly how that is installed, I think I, everybody should have got a copy of that. Appendix G is straight out of the code book. If, let me direct your attention down to the, the barrier requirement section, obviously it's AG 105. And it's got several things about the, the size of the fence, the height, it gets a little farther into it, it talks about the gate and how that has to be installed to swing outward and to be 54 inches tall, and then the latch to be three inches below the top of the gate on the inside of the pool to where a young child would have to reach over the top in order to disengage the lock and open it outward to themselves, which adds another barrier in of itself for the gate. But where we're at, what we're dealing with here is number four, it says the barrier of the composed horizontal and vertical members, and the distance between the top of the horizontal member is less than 45 inches from the bottom horizontal member. These members shall be located on the pool side of the fence, and then the vertical members would be on the outside of the fence, essentially is what it's telling us here. And those spacings between the vertical members shall not exceed an inch and three quarters wide to where you can't get your toe in that, in order for that to come across that. So you got the picture, you see some of these nice ornamental fences where they've got the vertical members and then they've got a horizontal member, top and bottom. If that horizontal member between those two is less than 45 degrees or 45 inches, that's where it closes those members up to where you can't climb up that fence. Well, the majority of what we utilize here in Milton, ours obviously be a question four board fence, and we put some wire inside of that. And we've been able to say, you know, we're meeting the intent of the code because it's five foot tall instead of four foot tall. In my mind, I keep saying, well, that's another foot for a child to have to crawl across. But I keep looking at this wire that we install, this horse wire, it's actually a two inch wide, so it's over the width limitation and it's four inches tall. So when you look at that per code, instead of it being 45 inches or greater, every four inches, you've got another ladder for a small child to climb up the inside of that fence to be able to get inside of that. We've been very lucky, we've not had any issues to date. However, this is, this is why we're bringing this before you for any comments, for concerns, for conversation as we go forward to this. And it's gonna be in your packet for, for a vote up in, in the near future. So we wanted to get it before you at this work session and answer any other questions that you have, or any comments or concerns.
Is there, Wade, I'm not familiar with the whole appendix, but I know they've got alarms that are actually in the pool that, you know, if, if something was dropped in the pool or a child were to fall in or that, you know, an alarm goes off. Would that, is that, you know, could that be a substitute or incorporated in with the alarm system, the doors and the fence and all?
To be honest, I'll have to do some research. I'm not aware of anything that would actually go off if somebody fell in the pool. Now there are some, and as you can see in this, on the next page, let me get it over at, under the, under section nine, nine point two, yeah, nine and nine point one, says where the wall of the dwelling serves as part of the barrier, one of the following conditions shall be met. Now, in this instance, to, to move around that, you can have a pool equipped with a power safety covering compliance with the STM 1346. There's a little relief when you go that route in order for that to be an exception to that to some degree. There's, nationwide, there's arguments as to whether or not this actually alleviates the barrier. The actual ICC code interpretation, I, I called on this last week, this does not alleviate the pool barrier, it just allows this as far as what they have to be, the doors to be alarmed, have to be if this barrier, the pool cover is installed and it's, it's not like you could just drape the tarp across it, it has to be powered and it has to substantiate 250 pounds in the center of it. So it's a pretty substantial, I've only seen one of these in 20 years, and that was out in Phoenix. So I can do some research on that to see if there's, I'm not aware of anything.
Okay. Okay.
Bill?
Is there a, a maximum distance that the fence could be surrounding the pool? You wouldn't want a 5,000 square foot pools in the middle of a five acre parcel, like you were talking about originally.
Agreed, agreed. That's something, we as this city, I mean, we could come up with an addendum to say, you know, the pool barrier has to be within 50 feet of the pool deck, or water's edge, or something along those lines, we could certainly do that. The code is silent on it. It just gives this, it gives the very strict qualifications of what this pool barrier has to be designed like, but it does not give the limitations of how, how close or how far away from the water's edge that it can be.
I can see that further out it would be, the chance of it being breached without being detected at some point in time, or greater.
I absolutely agree. And you've hit exactly where I've been going with this, with these larger properties that have got fences out of way, you, you really wouldn't have any idea. I mean, a child could be there, and you would never know it until it was too late.
Anybody else?
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you, Wade. Part of our city clerk will please call our item number four.
Item number four is RZ 12-10 to create a definition for exotic animals and/or related definitions within Section 64-1. Ms. Kathy Field.
Yes, um, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'd like to actually talk about item number four, item number five, and item number six together, because they all relate to one another. And in actuality, I'd like to start with item number five, which is to amend our AG1 agricultural district. Currently, our AG1 district allows for keeping of domestic animals. It does not allow for the keeping of exotic or wild animals. And these tax amendments propose to allow for exotic or wild animals in an AG1 district with a use permit. So having said that, the, you should have all these documents in your packet, by the way. Under Division 2 AG1 Agricultural District, this proposes to amend the AG1 use to allow certain exotic or wild animal uses set forth in Section 64-E 1838 in conjunction with the issuance of a use permit. So in order to effectuate the allowance of exotic or wild animals with a use permit in an AG1 zoning district, we have come up with two other proposed tax amendments. The first one deals with the definition of exotic and wild animals. And that is under Section 64-1, where we have a whole page defining exotic and wild animals, and I will paraphrase it to some extent, but it does say that exotic animal means any animal that is not normally domesticated in the United States or is wild by nature. Exotic animals include, but are not limited to the fowling, to any of the fowling orders and families, whether bred in the wild or captivity, and also any of their hybrids with domestic species. And these would include, this is not an exhaustive list, but is just to give you examples of what we're including under the wild animal definition. They include monkeys, chimpanzees, baboons, lions, tigers, bobcats, lynx, cougars, leopards, jaguars, wolves, coyotes, foxes, jackals, all bears, all venomous snakes, all constricting snakes, alligators, crocodiles, elephants, hyenas, hippopotamuses, giraffes, camels, raccoons, codas, kangaroos, opossums, rhinoceruses, tapirs, anteaters, sloths, armadillos, mongooses, civets, and gen, and genets. Then in addition, wild animal means any animal which is not wildlife and is not normally a domestic species in this state. This term specifically includes any hybrid or cross between any combination of a wild animal, wildlife, and a domestic animal. Offspring from all subsequent generations of such crosses or hybrids are determined to be wild animals. And then wildlife means any vertebrate or invertebrate animal life indigenous to this state, or any species introduced or specified by the board, and includes fish, except domestic fish produced by aquaculturists registered under Code Section 27-4-255, mammals, birds, fish, amphibians, reptiles, crustaceans, and mollusks, mollusks of any part thereof. So that is the definition that we're proposing to establish for exotic and wild animals, including wildlife. Then the last text, proposed tax amendment is entitled Section 64-1838 Exotic or Wild Animals, and this in essence establishes the conditions for a use permit. So pursuant to this section, exhibition or display of exotic or wild animals solely for education purposes, or keeping, rehabilitation, or maintaining exotic or wild animals pursuant to a valid current state issue wild animal license or wildlife exhibition permit shall be allowed only with a use permit issued in compliance with the development standards set forth in this section. And so this section talks about the requirements that need to be in place. First, that it, that it's in a required district, which is the AG1 district, that the appropriate license is obtained from the U.S. Department of Agriculture, Animal and Plant Health Inspection Service, or documentation that the applicant is exempt from this requirement. Next, that, that a, a U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service permit for special purpose possession, if exhibiting or dealing with birds regulated by this entity, be obtained. And that lastly, if necessary, the permits from the Georgia Department of Natural Resources, Wildlife Resource Division be obtained. And it sets forth the, the minimum standards under which a use permit should be considered, including, A, minimum lot size should be 10 acres, permitted curb cut access shall not be from a local street, all activity areas, including parking, parking structures, areas where animals are housed or grazed, shall be setback a minimum 100 feet from all property lines, a maximum continuous sound level of 60 dBa and a maximum peak sound level of 75 dBa shall not be exceeded at property lines of adjacent residential districts. If there is any visit, visitation by the general public, the area shall only be open from 7:30 to 7:30 PM. If located adjacent to any residential district or an AG1 district used for single family dwellings, the minimum buffers and landscape scripts, landscape strips required for the Northwest Fulton Overway District shall be required. Sanitary facilities or trash receptacles shall be located at a minimum of 100 feet from the property line. A minimum six foot high fence is required along all interior property lines. If visible from a public right of way, it shall be a four or five board equestrian style fence with a two inch by four inch welded wire non-climbable material on the fence. The applicant shall inform the Director of Community Development in writing of the number and types of mammals, of animals to be housed on the subject property, and any changes there, too. And basically, there shall be compliance with all the requirements of Chapter 5 of the Georgia Game and Fish Code. These documents, these three proposed tax amendments were reviewed by the Planning Commission at their meeting on September 25th. They were approved, their minor modifications are shown to you in yellow on these documents. But that essentially is the proposal for you this evening.
Good. Questions?
Question? Um, big picture. Obviously, there's already three levels of government above ours already looking at all this, and I'm just curious to know, you know, from a layered perspective, you know, how is our getting involved going to be relating to their, to what the other government, like the DNR and Department of Ag are already doing? And who actually is doing the enforcement of all this, and how does all that play in?
Uh, we have lots of questions. First of all, I, I think that from a licensing perspective, they're looking at the animals and how they're housed. What we're looking at is essentially the, the land use, to, to make sure that certain conditions are met on a case by case basis. So a use permit really relates to the land use, to, to the setbacks, to the decibel levels and whatnot, and requiring, of course, that all those licensing permitting requirements from the state and from the U.S. government are in hand by whoever, by anyone who applies for a special use permit.
So one is more for the actual ownership of the animal, the other is for the use of the land?
That's the way I interpret it, and maybe our city attorney would like to weigh in, but.
It makes more sense, because you all are dealing in your land use code. You're talking about where something can go. You underline regulations that Miss Fields talked about.
If something can go, gosh.
Karen, then Bill?
We say here that you have to inform the Director of Community Development writing of the number and types of animals to be housed, and any changes. I mean, that could be changing on a week to week basis. Do they have to let you know every time a monkey baby is born, or one is shipped off, or is it something that, you know, it's going to be on a quarterly basis, they need to let you know what's happening?
Well, I, I believe that the, the permitting requirement from the state requires a monthly report, and so that could easily be sent to, to me, a copy to me.
Okay, so it's not like every time a baby is born, they got to call you up, say, we got a new baby?
I hope not. I think that would be quite onerous, and, and I think clearly the.
Because babies are cute.
The permitting requirements from, from the state and from the feds would be enough for, for me as the Community Development Director.
Bill?
In relation to Karen's question there, what comes to mind is a recent case over in Gwinnett, I think where a crocodile was found in a detention pond, or some other private water structure there. I guess my concern is, reporting on a monthly basis or periodic basis, suppose you got an animal like that, that has escaped, and how often do they take inventory to determine, well, we've got three alligators that we can't account for today? Is that covered in the state statutes or state code?
I, I can't answer that question.
Particularly with, with species like that, that, you know, present more of a danger to.
Yeah, but, but I, I do think that having this on a case by case basis, in terms of being able to, for you all to, to review the type of animals that are going to be included, those types of questions on a case by case basis, I think, would be appropriate to make sure that they weren't escaping, if they did, or what type of remedy would be in place. I think those would all certainly fall into your consideration.
This, I have one other, and it's, it's Standards 2.8, and you talk about the minimum six foot high fence. I've worked, companies worked over at Yurkies in the past with primates, and most of the fences over there are some 20 or 24 feet high. And you talk about putting a four or five board equestrian style fence. I don't know if that's the enclosure that's enclosing the animals, or it's not really clear.
No, no, it's not. If I may interrupt him. Finish your thought, I'm sorry.
Well, if that's the enclosure containing the animals, certainly animals like, well, even my dog could climb a five foot high fence if it has welded wire fabric in there. Certainly primates, you know, it's no challenge at all.
They would have a, a fence above it, too.
And that's, and that was the case when we worked over at Yurkies, too. They, they had fencing material on top of the enclosures. But even, even that description, two inch by four inch, should be welded wire fabric, and I'm not sure what non-climbable material is. How do you get welded wire fabric two by four that, that you can't climb?
Yeah, you're right. It's, that's a good point, yes. It was the very point we brought up in the previous discussion. Let me just respond there to, to your thing about the six foot interior fence. That's basically, you know, obviously, if you're dealing with monkeys, chimps, and whatever, that the idea is that they would be in, in a closed cage on all four sides, so they wouldn't climb out. But that, this would certainly sort of be, act as a perimeter fence around the preserve, shall we say. Now, if there are larger animals, then conceivably that six foot high fence may be enough to contain them. But again, I think it's a case by case basis. But the idea was is to fence around and to control the access to the area with the animals.
So what's, okay, so you're saying this fence here is to control access to the property?
It's sort of like a barrier fence, just like we were talking about with the swimming pool in a sense.
So we're not actually addressing the enclosures that contain the animals?
Right. I, I think that's something we would have to address on a case by case basis, depending on what the animal was, because animal, monkeys clearly would be in a four sided cage.
Then you have some animals that burrow.
Yes, that's true. Right.
Joe?
Yeah, so I certainly understand if we're trying to just manage the land use piece of this, because that's the piece that makes the most sense, since there's already three other levels of jurisdiction involved, and, you know, I don't, I don't think anybody on our staff has any real, you know, expertise in the management of exotic animals, so, so land use should be the focus. So if land use is the focus, then the rest of the wording in the ordinance that tries to get into specifics about counting animals, this and that and the other, those are all things that I'm fairly sure are already covered with the other rules that, that those animal owners have to comply with, that whatever level, you know, probably at all three levels if we know the other governmental agencies that are involved. So, so why not simplify what we're trying to put on the books to, you know, just maybe talk to what's allowed on AG1, and, you know, it's got to be covered under these jurisdictions and defined by those jurisdictions, just sort of piggyback on what's already been done there.
And I'd like to add, that's my concern, too, is, you know, are we over government, you know, too much government on this? You know, I like the, the fact that we talked about more for land use, but letting, letting the other agencies that are in charge of that, because, you know, if we get to where we're, we're tweaking and adding rules, and, you know, are we taking any liability? I mean, a lot of us, and.
Like Joe said, our.
Our staff, you know, not familiar with, say, tigers, or this, or that, you know, is it better to let the DNR or whatever handle that? But we just have, at our use, you know, a code where, you know, we can allow it for land use, but not, you know, on how to, how to take care of the animals and, and feed them, and that kind of stuff. I'm almost thinking that might just open up a can of worms. The other question I had was, have our grandfather things in? If someone already has a, you know, facility that, that has exotic, you know, under the definition exotic animals already on their property, is that grandfathered in, the special use for that, or do they have to go back and apply for a special use permit?
Oh, I'm, I've touched your addressing can, I'm sorry.
No, no, I just, you know, what would, you know, if someone already had a.
If they are, if there's an existing property owner that has this sort of a use of the property, and Ms. Fields and I can get together and conclude that they're legitimately a legal, non-conforming use, then, then they'll be entitled to, to continue that legal non-conformity, so that's not going to be an issue. I don't, I don't know that that exists, but if it did exist, that would be my analysis to Ms. Field.
Okay. I think Matt and Bill, did you have some questions?
Well, I, to Bill's question about the six foot requirement around the perimeter fencing, that was a DNR requirement, as far as I remember, being involved in prior discussions. And again, that's a question about the, the overregulating of this, if that's an issue, so. And I, I could see the, the use of a, of a use permit, you know, in some aspects, but I do question, you know, if they're, you know, the issue came up because of a primate preserve, where other people were going to be coming into that, and as far as land, I don't know if we have an ordinance or a code for that type of use with that process, and I guess that's where the use permit comes in, but the actual ownership of those animals, I'm not so sure that that's a requirement of that, is that, that use permit. I just, again, I don't want to overregulate, because we already have three regulating agencies that do that. And if there's a way, again, we can make it more simple, I would be all for that.
Good, Bill?
Would it be appropriate in the, ours? Would it be appropriate in the RC 1213, the used permit, to call out by reference the other agencies that have control over the other aspects of governing, harboring exotic animals?
Well, we do make a requirement that they have all their permits from these entities, whichever ones are applicable. So before they even apply for the special use permit, they would have to have those, they would have to show the...
Naming them by reference?
Yeah, if you look at it, under the Section 1 requirements of the, it's the one at the top, it says, Section 64-1838, exotic wild animals, under one requirement, beside being in the AG1 district, they have to have the appropriate licenses and permits from those state and federal agencies that we are talking about.
I read it a couple of weeks ago, forgot it.
Does that, you know, does the council in general kind of go along with the thought that, you know, we're more in the special use permit for land use versus actual care and of animals? Because I think we open up a can of worms for ourselves, plus just add another layer of government. So, you know, if you have any ideas, Kathy, or want to tweak anything, you know, towards that, or for council's, Bill, you have a question?
It'll come up for sure, and I've had an issue with my place. How does it relate to the noise ordinance? I know hyenas make objectionable noise, so do peacocks. My neighbors had, their friends had peacocks that were in a farm behind them, and is, would...
Anyway, seventy-five, seventy-five decibel.
We've got two here. One is a level of sixty...
Constant.
Continuance, a constant, with a seventy-five peak.
Okay. There is, I know of an instance with howling dogs, and that howled all night long, and within our ordinance, there are provisions to take care of noise disturbance like that. I guess same would apply.
It would apply the same way, that's right.
This case.
Seen a hyena with a muzzle?
Can you get him on either?
Mr. Mayor, just a real quick question. Ms. Singles and I were sitting here, and Ms. Field, I don't know if you can answer this or not, but I know that I can, and that's just my lack of familiarity with these sort of exotic animals. What is the chronology as far as, as far as, maybe one of you all may know, as far as how this works from getting these sort of state or even federal permitting? I mean, are they going to want to see a presence on the ground of some of this, of some of this infrastructure already put up, and then they, and then they give the permit? So I guess my point is, is I'm wondering, by the time it gets to you, is it already going to have been far enough down the pipe where it's sort of going to put a lot of pressure on you to recognize the investment on the ground? Or is it something that would work in tandem with the other process? I just don't know.
You know, how about a suggestion, and that makes total sense, but maybe to where as we're, if we're just talking about land use, you know, they could come to us, we've got this piece of property, you know, we want to house these type animals, whatever. We could give them a special use permit for the land use, but that's subject to them getting the state and federal permits and all that permission. You know, that way, we're not trying to get in and make decisions, you know, that, again, may be different from what the federal agencies or other might say.
Absolutely.
Does that make sense?
That makes sense, or, you know, I don't know if the state or federal actors would say, well, one of the boxes you have to check on your application is that you have the requisite, you know, land use entitlement to do this. That may work perfectly with that. I mean, they may be able to come in and get a conditional, a conditional cut.
Yeah, but then my point, my point being that, you know, this would save the property owner or owner of the animals, they could come to us and we say, okay, you're approved from the city for the use land-wise, then your next step, you go deal, and, you know, and if they don't get those permits, then obviously they can't physically do it, but it doesn't make them...
So that brings up the question, which comes first, the chicken or the egg?
And that's a good question, because if the land owner has gone through all these hoops, gotten all these requirements taken care of, gotten all the licenses, done all these things, why are we worried about the land use permit at that point?
That's why I'm saying, if we did that first and made that a simple process, to where this, we're just giving you the land use, then you've got to go through all the hoops that you would have to anyways, from the other agencies, but, you know.
But let the other agencies who are specialized in the other things take care of it, we just worry about the land use aspect of it.
Right, but we're not, we're not putting ourselves in a position where they go through all the hoops to have that approved, and then we come in and say, well, no, your property's not exactly right, or whatever, versus we just kind of give them a green light there to go to the next step, and then those are probably the tougher restrictions, and then, you know, whether they have to come in and check their facilities and their enclosures, I'm sure they do, through a process, but that would be after the fact.
But the land use, the use permit would be contingent upon the fact that they obtain and maintain the other permits once the animals are there.
Right, right. But we're just trying to keep from having to go through all that, and then the chance that we might say no, versus approve it with the conditions that, in order to actually house the animals, obviously they have to get their other permits.
Yeah, I think that's the way we need to do it. We don't need to be in the permitting business for exotic animals.
Anything else? I think we kind of, you know, I asked about grandfather, if there's an existing, do we have to do anything with that, or?
Yeah, we don't. I mean, again, the only key is, is to get, to obtain legitimate legal non-conforming status, the, before we impose this rule, whatever they were doing beforehand has to be legal. If it's legal, they've, and then we suddenly make it illegal the way they're doing it, then they become non-conforming, but that's fine. But it had to be lawful, it's the only precondition. I'm very comfortable.
Okay. Any other?
Thank you, Kathy.
Okay, you're welcome.
Our City Clerk, Finance Manager, Assistant City Manager, fill in. Mom, please, stand outside.
Agenda item number seven is discussion of the existing fence regulations along public streets within the AG1 agricultural district. Kathy Field.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This was a request from you all, specifically Councilmember Hewitt, to look into our fence regulations. As you know, they were changed about six months ago, I believe, to require that fences along all public streets be three- or four-board fence-type. And the question was whether this was too restrictive. As you know, the Northwest Fulton Overlay District prohibits opaque fence, so we're taking that off the discussion, unless that's something that you want to consider changing. But if we leave off opaque fences and then think of other fence types, and again, that's, you know, if you want to change the three- or four-board fences, you know, there are options. I had brought this to the Planning Commission to see if they had any thoughts, and they felt that the way it was currently written, which is to require a three- or four-board wooden fence, should stay, period. I had hoped to bring this to the Design Review Board to get their input, but I've not been able to do that, and could do that certainly by the next meeting. The options that present themselves clearly are to keep it as it is, to go back to the original one, which is, which is that there are no requirements, with the exception that the opaque fences are prohibited, or we could look at something along the lines of actually stating, and could name the major highways upon which four-board fence, three- or four-board fence could be required, but then eliminate all interior streets that are part of subdivisions that would just, those fence styles would be under the covenants of the HOA. So we could, you know, mix and match this, but I don't know if you have any thoughts this evening, guidance to us, as we look at this, but I'm certainly open.
Yeah, I'd like, that third option, you know, might even, to me, make sense, because I know what our intent is, and I think it's good, the kind of brand in the city and the four-board fence most people like, but there's a lot of places it doesn't make sense, and particularly in certain neighborhoods. I mean, there are certain neighborhoods in Milton that they look great, and maybe, you know, should be part of the covenants if the neighborhood is designed that way, that look, but some neighborhoods would look silly with four-board equestrian-type fence. You know, they may look better with picket fences, or, you know, some iron, you know, whatever. So I certainly would be in favor of looking at that, having some flexibility, say, off the right-of-way, off the major thoroughfares, if it were saying in a neighborhood or what, not a subdivision. The other thing, you know, the opaque fence, and that, I guess the definition of opaque, that's like a privacy fence that we used to always see with wood, and obviously you can't see through it. You see a lot of neighborhoods have those along the back of their neighborhood, and are facing our streets, I saw some the other day. How are those addressed, or how would they be addressed? You know, where they're trying to keep noise and...
Yeah, Robin, would they have to go to the BZA?
Correct. It was in the Northwest Upper Lay, which most of the area is in Milton, and they would need, they wanted an opaque fence, whether it was a wall or privacy fence, they'd have to work on zoning appeals.
And so it wouldn't matter if it was at the front, or the rear, or the side, it would still have to go to the BZA, is the question?
If it was along the right-of-way, yeah, let me just double-check.
Okay, but if it's in the rear, then it may be, we'll have to check that.
If it's a street, if it is used from the right-of-way, so...
And that's where a lot of them, I think, are, because that's the reason they're there from people's backyards, they don't want the noise from the ride of the road, but on the flip side, from the right-of-way, you see the opaque fences. And we may not have had that come up recently, it's probably, that's more, you know, they're existing grandfathered, you see a lot of those, but, so what you're saying, Robin, is you think that, at this point, if someone was building a, going for a permit now for a new fence, a opaque fence, they just have to go to the BZA, say they were trying to mask the, you know, the back of their neighborhood?
We just had something go before the Board of Zoning, it was along Marble Mill, for an opaque fence, and it was denied because it's along Marble Mill and it was not...
But that was in the front, but, yeah, but we're talking about the sides and the rear. I think that's a good question, in terms of...
Karen?
Also, what about gated communities? Obviously, the purpose of a gated community is, part of it is security, and a four-board or three-board fence isn't exactly secure, so what about in those situations? I mean, have we thought about that?
Well, right now, it just says on public right-ofways, you should have a, so if it's a private road, then I would believe, and Robin corrected one more.
Okay, yes, I found it, sorry.
All right.
Fencing material in height, allowed this material shall be three or four board of wooden fencing with wooden posts in yards adjacent to a public street. Fences in yards adjacent to a public street should exceed fifty-five inches from finished grade. Talked about retaining walls, the construction of stone and earth only. Opaque fences are prohibited in yards adjacent to a public street, except as set forth in some sections four and five, this section deals with accessory site features, you know, I guess like a, there are a few churches that have trash, so they would have to have opaque, so there's a few exceptions to that.
So basically, opaque fences aren't allowed regardless of where they're located in the yard, is what you're saying?
Yeah, adjacent to a public street. So they could be interior, as long as they're not adjacent to a public street.
Okay, so...
I agree with you, we need a little bit of listening of the ordinance.
Yeah, Bert was one of them, she brought this floor, so let's let Bert.
Kind of what brought this up is I had a call from somebody in a neighborhood that is an established neighborhood, and there are some houses in there that are completely compounded in, if you will, with fences other than four-board fences. They're not chain-linked, you know, most of them are like what Wade was talking about around the pools, you know, the aluminum-type fences with two rails and with brick columns and everything like that. And some folks, I think specifically what brought this up, is bought a house that had that around the backyard, and at some point maybe wanted to do that around the front yard on their property, and the law says, no, it's got to be a four-board fence from the front lane of the house going forward. And that just doesn't necessarily make sense, if you've already got something that doesn't match, you know, doesn't match what you already have. And quite frankly, wherever it may be, four-board fence doesn't necessarily complement the architecture of that house or structure. So that's kind of where it came up. Now, we can look at some other things, you know, while we're looking at it, but that's where I think we've overstepped inadvertently what we were trying to regulate there. Yeah, we probably need to have some regulations where they're not, you know, privacy fences are chain-linked or this, that, or the other, but certainly if you've got one type of fence that's already there, that, again, that's kind of legal as it is, then you ought to be able to add to that. That's where it came about.
Matt?
Yeah, I liked your idea, I mean, obviously with the subdivisions, you know, as I work with my subdivision, HOA, you know, and talk with them, they, I mean, they have elected positions as well, and people that are responsible for their community, but still within the confines of the city of Milton. I would like, I would like to see it where, you know, if we have the open road neighborhoods, that we can provide the guidelines on that, because right now, there really isn't an overlay per se on that. But within those communities, you know, we can set a vision as far as different types of fences, you know, and list those types that maybe allow within those subdivisions, but anything exterior than that, maybe a visit in front of the DRB would make the most sense, you know, because as much as we want to have that sense of community within our city, you know, there is some, I can't think of the word, a feel that we want to have, you know, obviously, we need to have that, but we also want to make sure that we allow that flexibility, so that those individual subdivisions can be what they are wanting to be as well, from their own elected positions. You know, I'm definitely relaxing the rules, like Karen said, I'm all for that, but perhaps providing those guidelines, not only will help the citizens feel they can do something with what they need to do, but also to feel as a guide where they can go, you know, because a lot of times, these elected positions and subdivisions, they get in there and then they don't know what to do, you know, and if we can provide that as well, and that gives them options, or if they want something different than a visit in front of the DRB, maybe all this required, in my mind.
So just for clarification, are you just talking about the interior streets of the subdivision, or as opposed to the highway?
Interior streets primarily, you know.
Yeah, I think if, what I'm hearing, or what my thoughts are, and if it encompasses what others are thinking, and certainly could tweak this, but I like the idea of a four-board fence and the branding of the city on our main thoroughfares, our commercial areas, typically we include that, some of the main roads, I think they look good, and we'll give the branding of our city, but as everybody said, you know, there are some, use, for example, the manor, you know, it's all stone and brick in there, it looks silly to have four-board fences in there. There are other neighborhoods, they look great, but I'm almost thinking maybe if we just had some non, just list two or three not allowable fence types, and, you know, then give the individual homeowner some flexibility, you know. You know, you may say no chain-link, or no opaque fences like we have, but, you know, maybe they, you know, want brick and iron, wrought iron, or stone and, you know, slats or something like that, but, you know, each individual, and of course, most neighborhoods have their covenants, so they got to go before their board, and, you know, and if it, I don't know if it's something different, maybe go before our board, but, or DVR, but I just, I don't want to make it too complicated either, you know, every neighborhood's different, so, I don't know if we could narrow it down a little bit, and, you know, but, you know, have some that we specifically don't allow, and then maybe some, you know, broad, a little more broad items that we do allow, does that make sense? But, you know, inside a subdivision, and I know the whole opaque fence on a right-of-way, that's a separate issue, we probably need to talk about that, too, but, you know, what does everybody think about that, to where our major thoroughfares and main roads and the right-ofways are still the four-board, but allow neighborhoods within their covenants and, you know... but allow neighborhoods within their covenants and, you know, I guess we still need to... Yeah, we need to have some kind of, you need to have some leeway with your department, so you can say, okay, that fits in. But obviously their covenants are going to, you know, if they put up something crazy, they're going to catch them too. So I don't know, what's your thoughts on that?
I think that works for us, certainly, you know? We could certainly craft something along those lines.
I think we're all in agreement, we need to loosen it up a little bit. We're a little too heavy-handed, I think. You know, we want the four-board fence, three-board fence, you know, it is a symbol of Milton, but at the same time, you don't want everything in Milton to look exactly the same with the same fence, or else it would go nuts, so...
Well, I have respect too for the elected officials within the subdivisions also. I mean, they should be accountable to their own, you know, neighbors for being in that position as well. And, you know, as much as we, you know, we don't anticipate any renegade neighborhoods trying to do something, and they have their covenants already in there, and literally those people in those positions can be sued if they don't follow their covenants. You know, that's, we need to respect that as well. So, you know, I think that actually helps from a communication standpoint with other groups of authority positions, you know, within their own covenants, and working with the city as well. I think that's a sign of respect by saying that we trust them.
And I don't know if it fits in this section, or maybe the non-design guidelines or whatever, but I would also like to see us spell out a little bit more on what our spec for our four-board equestrian fence is, because we've tried, you know, we've got developments along Highway Nine, and you've got one that has got four boards on it, but two of them go a bit different direction. And then you've got some that's got, you know, that the posts aren't cut, you know, they've got fenials on the post. And then we got one, we were in a ground break, or the ribbon cutting the other day, and, you know, it's got wire on it. I mean, there's no reason for there to be wire on that fence, it's for a fifty-foot section. And I don't know if that's this section, but Robin, has there been...
Just some input when we did the Highway Nine Design Guidelines, and then it was codified, but during the discussions a couple of years ago, they wanted a little bit of variety, and they intentionally allowed the cross ones. I agree about, I don't know how hard-wired, or not hard-wired, the wire got onto that one.
And that's, I mean, nobody would ever notice that, but just...
The same with, they allowed for the columns, kind of like what Deerfield area has the columns, and then the fencing. So the intent of the committee was to have a little bit of variety, and not everything to be exactly a four-board. And so when we codified the Highway Nine Overlay District standards, well, I mean, the design guidelines became the district standards, we kept that open to be a four-board. That's why the gas station has a cross one, because they even asked us what he wants. Well, it would be one of these two things, and they chose the cross, because that's what...
That was allowed, yeah.
...the committee wanted, and that was what was codified about a year ago, to have variety. But if that's something you don't want variety, then I guess we could go back and get it.
That's just my thought, I don't know what everybody else thinks, but that's going to be another day.
Yeah, and I don't necessarily have problems with people having a little bit of choice, if the two choices fit in. I think if we get to where we're specifying the exact posts, and whether they're trimmed this way or that, you know, if we're getting too deep into it, if, you know, the intent is the four-board fence, because you can do them several different ways, and from a distance, really, you don't notice it, but, Bill?
I think Deerfield's already set a standard. It does fall within the definition of four boards. And I think we get into the Form-based Code issue with Deerfield area, may want to specify that as the standard for the Deerfield corridor.
Okay, anybody else? All right, thank you. Did I give you some feedback?
Absolutely, yes, we'll come back.
Do you still think you want to take it to the DRB and let them...
I'll get some input from them, so next time you see it, we'll have some input from them as well, and we'll work on the comment.
Okay, all right, well, thank you very much to our staff.
Anybody else have anything they need, want to discuss, bring up?
No.
All right, thank you, we'll adjourn this meeting.